Good Tuesday evening, everyone. The April 13th, 2021 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. Board Member Cummings, will you please read our commitment statement?
We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Allison Campbell, District One.
Here.
Mrs. Beth McCall, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District Three.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Throer, District Four.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District Five.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. I will now ask Mr. Gary Smallridge, Principal at Fort King Middle School, to please come up and introduce who will be providing us with the inspiration and the pledge. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Gullett. I want to, it's my pleasure to introduce you to Holly Gomez. She's a student at Fort King Middle School with me. She goes many years back, all the way back to our Highlands days when I was the principal there, so I've known her for a long time. And she's got a great story about giving up her money and her sacrifice when she raised her pig, brought it to the Southeastern Youth Fair. And leading up to that, I heard that she was going to donate her pig to a good cause. I'm going to let her talk about that and talk about the cause in just a little bit. But she did all that, raised the pig, donated the proceeds to a cause. And where a lot of students will put that money in their pocket, put it away for college, go buy some nice clothes or something, she decided to give up all that and she did all the work behind it. So this is Ms. Holly Gomez, and she's just a wonderful, wonderful student.
Thank you.
And I would like for her to tell you what she did and how it happened, and talk a little bit about how much she raised.
Absolutely. Looking forward to hearing all about it. Welcome, Ms. Gomez.
Hello. So I was raising a pig for the Southeastern Youth Fair, and my dad had brought up donating my money to a good cause, and I was for it. So basically, we went around to people and we asked if they would want to donate a dollar per pound or however much they wanted to donate. We raised around $20,000 for Brian's All-Stars in a matter of around like three days towards the end. And it was a great, it was a great experience, especially when we were standing in the auction arena, and we had some of the kids come around by us, and they were just like jumping for joy. And then the whole crowd was just cheering them on. It was really great. But I brought my pig out to their ball field so the kids could like see it before he went off to the auction, and they loved it. Like that, that really made it a great part of the experience. So overall, I would do it again, but probably with a steer so I could raise more money and donate it to another great charity, maybe them again, who knows, in the future. But it was great overall. That was about it.
That is amazing. It is.
Now, as we're at the fair, leading up to the auction, and she's about to come out, there were people in the crowd hearing about it, and they're literally coming up saying, hey, I would throw some money in. So it actually went up right at the end a little bit as well. We do have a little token of our gratitude from the school because you really make us look good.
Yeah.
Is it okay for Brian's All-Stars to talk a little bit about what they are going to do with all that money?
They will, please.
Good evening, Board Members.
Could you tell us what Brian's All-Stars is?
Brian's All-Stars, I'm sorry. Brian's All-Stars Challenge Sports is a nonprofit 501(c) I started eight years ago, president and founder. We have three sports programs, basketball, bowling, and baseball. Holly and them approached me and asked, could they, you know, offer the pig for donation? I'm like, sure, that'd be awesome. Dad, her dad back there is wonderful also, offered, said, you know, we could raise $5, $10,000. I'm like, $1,000 would be great. She raised 20, basically. But we use this money to offer all free programs. We're playing tonight, as a matter of fact, Tuesdays, Thursdays, we're playing kickball because of COVID, so we can't, you know, have any hands-on basketball. We have from 10 to 60-year-old, all disabilities. So Down Syndrome autism, just all different degrees. We had up to 98 players signed up before COVID. Right now, we're averaging about 25 players a night, two days a week, and once a month we do bowling. With this money, we were, the only thing we charged was bowling, so now we're enabling the students to come bowl free. You know, we take up the money for her doing that, so. And we also have something for her when she comes by ball later, so I wish I could have brought it here, it would have been perfect. But we appreciate her and Gary and the whole family and everybody for allowing that, so.
Absolutely. Well, we appreciate you. You have a lot of former students that participate in your program.
My son as well, you know, went through the school system. I'm an employee of the school board, 31 years almost now, so I know most of you. So it was awesome to see it, and awesome to continue Hillcrest's, you know, programs, so.
That's amazing.
I thank you, and thank Holly, Gary, Mr. Gomez.
Thanks, everybody, yes. Usually, we speak first, usually we wait till after the pledge to speak, so.
Kind of messed that up.
Not at all, not at all.
Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just didn't want you to try to run away, Holly, after the pledge, because the board definitely wants to say hi to you.
Holly, I'm going to start. I have been in the nonprofit world probably for, well, I'm not going to tell you how long, but it is my career. And to have a young person like you, if we had more people that really had your thought process and your attitude, imagine where this world would be. So thank you. I see great things for you. I hope maybe you'll consider work in the charitable organizations. It gives back so much to me, more than, more than I do for them. And your fundraising skills, we could really use in the nonprofit world. So thank you for that, because it's just remarkable that a young person would raise $20,000 and not just give a portion of it, but give it all. So you're amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Dad. I know that that came from somewhere, that attitude, that thought process.
It's our pleasure.
She is growing up well.
So I'll second that, absolutely. Everything that Ms. McCall said, I too have worked in the nonprofit world, and we actually have created a curriculum that we teach students about philanthropy and putting youth philanthropy to action. And you have done just that without us ever teaching you, and somebody did along the way, so I'm very, very grateful for that. I also second her that, you know, maybe a fund development director position in your future, just saying. But also Brian's All-Stars, I've known about that organization for many, many years, and you couldn't have chosen a better one. It's a great purpose and a great program that's offered that not many people are aware of. So you've now put a spotlight on an organization that often kind of goes overlooked from some. And so that also is to be, you know, honored in this all. And so I'm just grateful that you chose to give back, as everyone has said so far, and your future's bright, there's no doubt.
I guess it's me. Listen, I think that what you did was extremely admirable to come up with an idea and such a huge donation to some kids that really needed, to a group that really, really needs it. And I kept thinking of this as you all were talking. What kept coming to my mind was the book Charlotte's Web. And y'all got it?
Yeah.
I kept seeing Charlotte's Web, and I was like, Charlotte saved the pig and did it. Why are you laughing? So hopefully, everybody that's listening is going to go read Charlotte's Web if they haven't. Read the book, don't watch the movie. But I just kept thinking of Charlotte's Web. So you are a modern-day Charlotte, so thank you.
Oh, that's awesome.
Thank you.
I love Charlotte's Web. I used to read that to my students. Holly, you are a wonderful human being, and to do something so noble at such a young age is very commendable and honorable. And, I mean, you have two fundraisers over here, and they mentioned that as, you know, maybe future, so you already started on your resume, which is good. But I also think it was important, and how nice to let those students meet your, you know, meet the pigs so they could see and understand, and that's a really learning experience, too, for them and for you. And I just don't have enough words for you, honestly. You're awesome. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Gomez, thank you for being so selfless, and thank you for raising awareness about a segment of our school population that not everyone always sees, because they're in specialized programs, and, but they're part of our community and they're part of us. And I get the feeling that you felt incredibly rewarded to do this project, and you did speak to that, but it feels good to do good things, right? So welcome to the club. Thank you. And thank you to your parents as well, and Dad. Yep. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Mr. Aaron Martin, Program Specialist, Curriculum and Instruction, Library Services. He's going to come forward and introduce the individuals to be recognized for School Library Month.
Good evening, Madam Chair Throer, Madam Vice Chair King, Board Members McCall, Cummings, and Campbell, Superintendent Dr. Gullett, Mr. Powers, and Ms. Elena Martinez Lopez. It's my honor to come before you tonight to recognize April as School Libraries Month, and to thank you for your continued support of our school library media centers. In Marion County, like many other districts in Florida, our media centers are the main source of print materials for our students, and they play a critical role in closing achievement gaps by providing equitable access to resources and encouraging a love of reading. Some of our media specialists recently conducted an informal survey by asking their students one question. Why is the school library important? I'd like to share a few responses with you. From a fourth grader, "The library is one of my happy places." Another fourth grader says, "The library is a place to use your imagination instead of reality." A seventh grader says, "That a person can find themselves in the library. I love graphic novels, and I can see myself in them." Another sixth grader says, "That there are not many places that I can get books." Another seventh grader says, "Some kids don't have a public library near them." An eleventh grader says, "The library is a great place for students of all ages, sexualities, religions, and race to connect and share their thoughts and imaginations. It gives access to books of all genres and worlds, and this day and age, it's important for students to have somewhere to go, to have a peaceful place to exist." It's from an eleventh grader. Those are some of the thoughts directly from our students. I'm joined here tonight by three of our wonderful media specialists, Mr. Greg Wilson from Greenway Elementary, home of the only book vending machine in north central Florida. Miss, he played a large part in that. Ms. Angela Warner from Fort McCoy School. She is a past Teacher of the Year, a past Rookie Teacher of the Year, which is not easy to accomplish as a media specialist, it doesn't happen that often. And she will be finishing up her ed leadership program in December. And Ms. Emily Wilson from Westport High School. She has successfully written multiple grants for her school library, and she is one of only 12 media specialists in the state to be appointed to the Florida Teens Reading Committee by the Florida Association for Media and Education. So that's a pretty, pretty good honor. In this challenging year, these individuals, as well as our other 46 amazing media specialists, have demonstrated their extraordinary creativity, versatility, and adaptability as they have implemented extensive safety protocols, hosted socially-distanced lunches, pushed heavy carts of books through hallways and down sidewalks, all the while striving to maintain high-quality library programming and services for our students. If you visit one of our school library media centers this month, you will not likely see much fanfare regarding School Library Month. You'll most likely see displays pertaining to National Poetry Month, Earth Day, or even encouragement to our students as they are in the midst of state assessments. So tonight, we take a moment to thank these humble, highly dedicated individuals who consistently go the extra mile for their students. Thank you again for your recognition and support of School Libraries Month.
Thank you.
That book vending machine is a sight to behold. And if there's anyone out there listening who has books or money that they want to donate to help purchase more books, I know that they would be very grateful at Greenway.
Yes, we would.
We talked about that not long ago, and actually, the Black Stallion Literacy Program is going to fit perfectly with, it's a great segue into rolling that into Libraries Month. But I don't know when we got to start calling them, when we started calling the media centers and away from library, and I think that I would love to call it a library again, frankly, because there's something to be said for all that you've said about library, and media says something different, I think, to kids nowadays. And so, but all of you are doing such amazing work, and I'm grateful, we're grateful, for all the things that you're doing to ensure that students have a safe place. And some kids, the love of reading is one of the things that keeps them in school and one of the things that draws them in. And so oftentimes, we have students that struggle with literacy, we have that segment, but we also have another segment who thrives on literacy and thrives on diving into a book and literally diving in and seeing themselves in those characters that they're reading about. So what you do is amazing work, and it really is important for everything that we do in schools. Thank you.
And I too thank you guys for everything that you're doing. Kids get the love of reading from their librarians. I just, I was asked yesterday in a meeting with my librarian from College Park, not this College Park, but College Park Primary, and I reminded her that the reason that I, her name is Loretta Pompey Jenkins, who went on to be principal of Fesidin. And I reminded her, I said, "The reason I like to read is because you instilled in us a love to read in the library." And that was the fun part of going to school for me, PE, lunch, and library. Still like lunch. So what you guys do is really vital to our kids being successful, so thank you, thank you.
And to be able to have the kids come in and learn how to use the library and to learn how to research and look at all the information that they need. I was at Bellevue Middle School, and Ms. Campbell was there, and we were actually teaching a class in the media center, but the interaction of the students that had come in that were not a part of our class, that were researching and talking and working together was really a great thing to see. And I love when I go into the media centers and the media center specialist is dressed up and having story time and with our little ones. And it, your job is incredibly valuable, and thank you for sharing yourselves and for all you do for our kids. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just going to add how instrumental you guys are to the education to all students. You guys know your students. When students come in and they may not even know what they want to read or like to read, you guys are there to, you know, learn the student and show them the right way, and as Cummings said, you know, teach them that love for learning. So thank you so much.
Yes, thank you, and we all have our own great memories of libraries and how important they are. And I'm pretty sure the Milliken Elementary School Library was my third-grade teacher's salvation. It was a place where she could send me, and it was quiet, and it was predictable, and there was something about that that I really loved. It was, it was very calming, and when she introduced me to the card catalog with all the horse books, including the Black Stallion, and then I realized it was a whole series, you know, it was just, it opened up a world to me that I wanted so badly, but being in Cleveland Heights, Ohio, there weren't a lot of horses around, and it taught me that I could eventually have a farm in central Florida, and that's exactly what happened. So that's what libraries did for me, and, and also just as far as the vocabulary and the different things you're exposed to, and I've got a good one for you, I became a very voracious reader. And so I think libraries carry with us all through our lives, and that's incredibly important. So thank you for everything you do so well.
Thank you.
Okay, it's always the best part of the night to have the presentations. All right. Dr. Gullett, good evening.
Thank you, good evening. Yes, indeed, it is always the best part of the evening, hard to follow. So Madam Chair, members of the board, I recommend approval of the agenda for the April 13th School Board meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
We have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Board Member Cummings, seconded by Vice Chair King. All those in favor, say aye. 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 Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the February 2nd, 2021 Special School Board meeting?
I move.
Second. Moved by Board Member Campbell, seconded by Board Member McCall. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the February 9th, 2021 School Board meeting? Moved by Vice Chair King, seconded by Board Member Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the February 18th, 2021 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
I move.
Second. Moved by Board Member Campbell, seconded by Board Member McCall. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, we'll move on to persons requesting to address the board, and I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address this school board meeting tonight. Good evening, Attorney Powers.
Good evening. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Now, speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Madam Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez Lopez, do we have any speakers tonight?
Yes, Chair, we have two. Ms. Laura Gilligan.
Good evening.
Laura, L-A-U-R-A, Gilligan, G-I-L-L-I-G-A-N, 7280 Southwest 204 Avenue, Don Ellen, 34431. Good evening, board. I'm coming to you today as the chair of the MEA side of the District Evaluation Committee. I'm here to implore you to either adjust the state and district VAM scale or the preferred action of waiving VAM scores this year as allowed by the emergency order from the governor issued this past Friday. With teacher accountability coming into in 2011, a committee of MEA teacher members and district school administrators was put together, which I have been a member of since its inception. This committee would meet face-to-face to work things out collaboratively. In the last four years, the relationship has completely dissolved. The district made the decision this year, after hearing from several teachers and district staff, to take a wait-and-see approach. We are now in the 11th hour and must rush to put together a plan. We have been ready to meet since the beginning of the school year and shared with the district suggestions and solutions. The district has not met with us once this year, nor shared anything. When Dr. Gullett was hired, my committee felt a sense of hope. We looked forward to a new day when we would once again sit down and work together as a collaborative body. In the fall, the district called for an Emergency Online Testing Committee meeting, which the MEA president and I attended. To my surprise, one of the topics brought up by the district was VAM. District staff clearly stated that they knew this was something that needed to be done. I shared with several district staff a rough draft of proposed changes to VAM and the rubric for not only this year, but also for the following year. We hope to hear from the district about meetings soon, however, we were left hanging. Fast forward to the spring, one month ago, I received an invite to an evaluation committee meeting, however, the MEA side of the evaluation committee was not invited, only the MEA president and myself. I attended this meeting with an open mind, but knew going in the likelihood of any decisions being made was slim. The data shared by the district showed that a majority of the teachers were at the time rated as effective or highly affected. I pointed out to the group that formal evaluations in Domain 4 had not taken place and would have a significant impact on teacher ratings. I presented data that I researched through the DOE showing Marion's standing in the state as far as the percentage of highly effective teachers. This district average has been in the 30% range for the last several years as far as the number of highly effective teachers. We're eighth from the bottom for 2019, with only 33.3% of teachers rated highly effective. Looking around at other districts, Citrus has 81.6% rated highly effective, and after their salary negotiations this year, make more money than we do. Levy, at 48.2% of their teachers rated highly effective. Lake County was 53.7, Sumter was 70.6. If you look at statewide, what's happening, 57 of 67 districts in this state, which is 85% of them, have at least 40% of their teachers rated highly effective. 47 of 67 districts, 70%, have at least 50% of teachers rated highly effective. 31 out of 67 districts have at least 70% of their teachers rated highly effective. I left the Zoom meeting feeling my time had been wasted. This board has been concerned about has been concerned about staffing classrooms with qualified full-time teachers. Why would a teacher want to join or stay in Marion? I will briefly touch on some points impacting a teacher's VAM and final summative. The Danielson model was meant to be a growth system. It's become a gotcha system. Equitable classes. This is contract language, but has not been happening for many years at all levels for a number of reasons. MTSS process. Too much to list, but the latest concern is moving students from tier three to tier two who are not succeeding. ESC, much going on there that needs to be looked into. Behavior. Teachers are being told to handle Level One referral behaviors on their own. Being discouraged from writing referrals on highly disruptive students' attendance as a committee, an agreement was reached several years ago that student attendance would be part of the district VAM formula. We are still waiting for that to happen. I'm going to skip ahead. The board has said over and over what an outstanding job we are all doing. I have just shared with you some of the reasons teachers are frustrated and feeling hopeless. The pandemic and its ramifications in the classroom are causing undue stress on all teachers. You have the power in your hands to show the teachers of Marion County how much you respect and value them. Board, I stand before you as a veteran teacher with 30 years of experience who has been deeply involved in the evaluation system, and I'm telling you that I have lost all confidence in this system.
Your thought is inspired, so.
Thank you.
Finish your thought, but just go ahead.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilligan. Appreciate you coming forward and sharing what you did. And I would just like to ask Dr. Gullett when we will be getting our next update regarding the topics Ms. Gilligan just touched on.
Certainly, thank you, Madam. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Vianello is here, and he's been leading the work on this, as well as Ms. Oliver, who leads negotiations. If they'd like to come forward, they could provide an update on the work to date and the statement regarding VAM was addressed in the emergency order from Friday. So, we were able to get some additional insight into that, so they can both share that.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett, and good evening, board members. We have had several meetings, one in the fall and, and one recently a few, about a month ago in the spring, where we did have committees come together and we were taking a look at different proposals. One of the things that we've been waiting on is the executive order. And the executive order, as you know, came out last Friday. Since then, we have met internally. We had a meeting Monday morning. We have a meeting tomorrow afternoon as well to look at some different proposals that are impacted by the results of the, the executive order.
I have a question. Have the MEA been involved in any of this? Because we, every time we hear them, they're saying that they're not involved or they're not notified. And is it, what's, what's caused this communication gap? For somebody saying that they're there, I mean, what's, what's causing that?
I think that's a communication issue in the way of the MEA negotiation committee hasn't been involved. Instead, the evaluation discussions have gone through an evaluation committee that is separate and apart from the actual MEA negotiations committee, which has been how this has been handled in Marion County for years. Kind of like our insurance committee. Our insurance is bargained with all three unions in, at the table in a committee that is outside of the MEA bargaining committee, or the IUPAT, or the MESP bargaining negotiations team. So, the union never asked to come to the bargaining table over the evaluation piece. They've always worked through a committee with the district instead. Just recently, did they say, did they send us an MOU, I believe last week, and formally gave an MOU to me asking for, you know, a proposal for our evaluation piece. So, we have met after we received the state's guidance, and we've met once on Monday, as Mark expressed, and then we're meeting again tomorrow to discuss what proposal I will bring to that MOU conversation. Now, the MOU is also outside of the actual MEA negotiation committee. So, that's not bargaining at the table. It's MOU discussions, and it will include me, certainly, and Mr. Carson, and the president of MEA, and the bargaining agent. But it's not the full-on team of both sides. And that's how we do MOUs, and we've done all of our MOUs that way. So, it is a little confusing. So, when people say these things, it's hard to understand exactly why. But that is why. So, a, a committee has been meeting, and that is how it's been handled in, in our county in the past. And now, MEA has just recently, last week, said, okay, we don't want to work through the committee. We want to give you an MOU. We want to sit down with the bargaining agent for the district, and we want to hash this out. So, I will.
And how soon, how soon will that happen?
I've given multiple dates that I pulled together yesterday, had Carmen, my secretary, look to see if the boardroom was available, because we need the boardroom available for negotiations and for MOU conversations. So, we just sent all of those dates, and it'll be a back and forth until we can settle on some times.
So, Ms. Gilligan, did you hear that?
Um, I think there's a little bit of confusion. I am not part of the negotiating team.
Let's, let's go ahead. And what we need to do in, in this forum is come to the conclusion that there's two things in play here. One of them is waiting, which no one likes, and that has affected this district strongly, not only in this area, but in the area of our externally operated schools. And so, that has really hogtied us in a lot of ways. The other issue I'm hearing about is just straight-up communication. Obviously, there's some discontent and dissatisfaction with the current system and, and the way it's working now. Maybe it worked fine in the past, but it, apparently, there's a disconnect now. So, so my ask is if you would please, you know, work on this, and let's come up with a solution that feels good to everybody. We are never kidding when we say how important everyone is in this system. So, we do what we need to do to make adjustments, and then we move forward. How's that sound?
Yes, we just received the MOU from the union, and we're addressing it immediately. We were already in those conversations, so that's exactly what happened.
Okay. And then we'll be getting updates from you moving forward, and we're going to work to get this better because it has to. And, and the perception from everyone needs to feel that way. You know, I, I see it from different angles. I know how frustrating it is to be waiting for guidance from yet another entity before we can commit to anything. And, and that's been the way it's been, and a huge frustration through the year across many concerns. So, we've got an opportunity here. I say, you know, let's, let's take it. Thank you for coming to us again, Ms. Gilligan, and for all of your hard work, and thank you to you guys, too. I know we all want this to work.
And, Madam Chair, and so you have mentioned a couple of times, Ms. Oliver, that we have been meeting. I'm assuming that's all internal district meetings. Perhaps if there was communication back and forth with MEA saying, we have been meeting. I mean, perhaps. I, I don't know if that's.
And we're involved with the evaluation committee meetings.
Okay.
We're there.
So.
Wait a minute. Did you say evaluation committee meetings? You put together.
Oh, step up, step up, step up.
You put together an online.
Can you please step to the microphone?
An online emergency committee meeting and a district evaluation committee and did not invite the MEA side of the evaluation committee?
I didn't do any of that because I'm not involved in any of that.
Someone did.
Well, that was, that was part of the committee that we had in the fall as well as the spring. And the intent there was to do some collective problem solving and brainstorming and working together on a variety of issues. The VAM was touched on in the fall. We came back and provided more intense conversation as a singular focus when we met a month ago. But, again, the intent of that was just to continue to keep the dialogue open, have conversations, listen to the proposals, and not make any decision, finalized decision, until we receive guidance from the executive order. Now that we have that, we're ready to move swiftly on this and hopefully come to a resolution.
Okay. Thank you, and I know you will keep us posted.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Andy Diaz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry. My, my, I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm going to draw on my, my.
Okay. Okay. Okay, sir. That was it? Okay.
Just in case it wasn't picked up by microphone, Mr. Diaz withdrew his request to speak.
Okay. All right, thank you. Make sure we get it on the record. All right. May I have a motion to approve revised resolution number 21-01, a resolution permitting five additional days of paid Marion County Public School leave for COVID-19-related reasons and continued provisions outlined in the Families First Coronavirus Response Act? May I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Board Member Cummings, second by Board Member Campbell. Is there any discussion?
Simply to point out to the board, this was a matter of the fact that it was a revised resolution. It's already been previously approved. However, we need to make sure that, as to the dates, that we revised it appropriately, and it has been submitted with that revision and is ready for approval.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C. 7.1 through C. 18.3? Moved by Vice Chair King?
Second.
Second by Board Member Cummings. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to donations. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $17,173.75. $10,000 to Don Ellen High School from the Marion County Hospital District. $1,000 to Forest High School from Citizens First Bank. Materials to build a three-bin compost structure valued at $1,256 to Hillcrest Public Schools from UF IFAS Extension Marion County. $2,849 to Lake Weir High School from Lake Weir High School Boys Basketball Boosters. Student backpacks and supplies valued at $1,068.75 to Reddick Collier Elementary School from Kingdom of the Sun Chapter Military Officers Association of America. And $1,000 to Vanguard High School from Citizens First Bank. May I have a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Board Member Campbell, second by Vice Chair King. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Vice Chair King, would you please give our thanks today?
I sure will. On behalf of the Marion County School Board, we are so grateful and appreciative to your donations as they help make our, our schools and our community better. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. All right, moving on to board committee reports and concerns. First of all, the following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for April 22nd, 2021, at 9:00 AM. The purpose of the work session is to discuss long-range planning. Board concerns, value adjustment board appointments, code of student conduct, two of two, comprehensive mental health plan, one of two, quarter three transformation presentation, and COVID-19 updates if needed. The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for May 6th, 2021, at 9:00 AM. The purpose of the work session is to discuss board concerns, board membership dues, school start and stop times, referendum options, comprehensive mental health plan, two of two if needed, MTI, MTC properties, recommendation for external operator at Oak Crest Elementary for 2021, 2022 school year, and COVID-19 updates if needed. Also, I do need consensus to cancel the July 13th, 2021 board meeting. This falls directly in the middle of the Fourth of July holiday, and the district is typically closed. Do we have consensus?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right. Ms. Martinez Lopez, do you have anything else for us tonight?
Just one thing, just a reminder, board. We do have the FSBA reinstatement form this Friday, so we will start promptly at 8:00. So, I ask that you be here at 7:45, please. And also.
She's taking attendance.
All right, I missed that. What did you say? Why not? It's Friday. The FSBA reinstatement form starts at 8:00. Need you, would like you to be here at 7:45. And also, if you could please check your mailboxes and, and please go through your mailboxes so that we can continue putting mail in your mailboxes.
7:45, huh?
Yes, sir.
As long as Osceola Carline moves quickly, I will be here.
I hear there's a little trick to that.
Oh, my goodness.
Vanguard Carline as well.
Yes, yes.
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Martinez Lopez. Board Member Campbell.
Oh, hi. Okay. Let's see. So, first of all, I want to congratulate all of our Media Festival winners. Unfortunately, I was unable to judge this year, but I have done that in the past. And I know we have amazing talent coming out of our schools all the time through the Media Festival, the youngest learners, as well as our most seasoned, always put in terrific projects. And so, congratulations to all of those winners. Just a couple of things I wanted to update as well. I'm grateful that I attended the Florida School Board Association Finance Forum on Thursday and Friday this past week. Learned a lot, again, so that was 2.0 version. And I have already talked to Ms. Boston Ellis about some thoughts that I had from there, and she said I'm a good student, so I was excited about it. When Ms. Boston Ellis tells you you're a good student, then I was paying attention well, so I felt, I felt good about that. A couple of other things. So, Planning and Zoning Committee at the City of Ocala last night, as you know, I'm the representative on that. I've been talking with Mr. Hurley here today. It looks like the Point Grand Apartments that will be three-story apartments immediately to the south of College Park Elementary School, at least past Planning and Zoning last night. Mr. Hurley, he's been emailing me some today. It looks like the impact could be on, obviously, College Park, Liberty, and Westport there probably within the next two years. And we don't really know what the impact might be, but just putting it on your radar so we know. I know that those schools are already our, some of our most highest-capacity schools, and so we need to have that as a, at least thought process of where we go with that. Additionally, I participated today in the Governor's West Meeting, and so they were asking about an update on Howard Academy. So, I did speak today with, oh my goodness, his name just totally left me. Anyway, I spoke today with Mr. Robert Knight and, and got an update from him. So, for the record, I would like to share that since I didn't have the full update today. What he said was they are currently in design phase, and they're waiting on the civil engineer. They hope that they'll have that either by the end of this week or early next week. Then, it will go out to bid, and then, obviously, we'll have to get it on the school board and agenda and all of that. He is still hoping that construction could happen sometime June or July. We do have to understand, as the community needs to know, because it is such a sensitive project, and all of the things are going to have to be done with it, they're going to have to make changes to water and sewer all the way out to the street. I mean, there, there's some very sensitive issues that are also. It is all wood, and wood is one of those commodities that is not very available at the moment. And so, we just have to take all of that into consideration. So, while it's not happening as quickly as we might have hoped that it could, we are still on that June-July time table in hopes that as the bids and all are approved, that we will be able to have access to the materials that are needed to get that done. And also, just congratulations to all the students today on the FSA writing. I know my students were participating in FSA writing today, and it's kind of a daunting thing. Some are, one of my students feels better about it than the other two. So, it, it's just one of those things that you, it's like a rite of passage. You've all gotten through it, and so now we have more that are upcoming. But congratulations to all those who at least got through today, and all those that they welcomed back, I guess, to campus today. Also, the online learners that were welcomed back to campuses to take those FSA tests. And so, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. Board Member Cummings.
Good evening, everyone, again. I'll be very, very brief. Ms. Campbell kind of touched on the Howard Academy situation. That committee has been meeting. That committee met as recently as last night. And I'm sure they kind of, you probably gathered some information on that. So, they will be meeting again next Monday night with a presentation from the hospital district. So, I'm going to leave that at that. I do want to request from you, Madam Chair, that I got contact from Ms. Latoya Artis, who is a, who works for the City of Ocala, about coming to this board and presenting. It's called the Buddy and Athlete Program. It's for special needs kids. And so, I wanted to try to get them on to one of our work sessions. And it's, she's with the City of Ocala Recreation Parks. Would like to do some partnership with our students as far as also helping them to get some volunteer hours and things. So, I talked to Elena about that. So, we have the 22nd as a work session, and the 6th of May, I think she has like a 10, 15-minute presentation.
Okay. The 22nd and the 6th of May. I would be leaning more towards, I think, the 22nd because the sooner the better. It's not as robust of an agenda for our work session on the 22nd as it is on May 6th. So, if she's available on April 22nd, Dr. Gullett, is that good with you? Dr. Gullett, is that good with you?
Yes, Madam Chair, we'd be happy to accommodate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to give a shout out to the Reddick Collier School. Ms. Sandy and her staff, Ms. Gotcha. They were most accommodating to us on this past Saturday. We did the second round of the COVID vaccinations. And I also want to thank Mr. Tom Butler. I forgot to mention him in the last meeting. He does so much for that area up in Reddick, and he was so instrumental in that farmship project that we did at North Marion Middle School. So thank you, Reverend Butler. That's it.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. Board Member McCall?
Yes, I too attended Finance 2.0, and there's always so much to be learned, even being a veteran school board member now. And it's always fascinating to break it down and remember what our spending looks like, what our revenue looks like. So it was an excellent session. I'd just remind you, things are really heating up in Tallahassee. Needless to say, there are some things that are of concern to school boards. There is a tremendous amount of charter school bills that could be very concerning cost-wise to all districts. So we're keeping an eye on all of that. So Bill Tracker in the Florida School Board Association is a good way to keep track. And it's very fast and furious right now. Some of the bills that haven't been heard, I understand that the Senate hasn't heard them, but they're going to begin doing that. And I feel like some of those are going to be bundled together like they have been for several years, those very long train bills. So there are some concerns, some good news, but also some concerns. So stay tuned for that. I also want to give a shout out to Mr. Ed Hall. I know that many of you know him. He has been here before. He has put together, and I'm sure all of you received your invitation, for April 22 honoring all the coaches in our district. I will not be able to be there because my grandson is in a play where he has a lead role, so I need to make that my priority. But Mr. Hall has worked incredibly hard on this event and has done it personally. And I just want to shout out to him and say thank you for honoring. It has been a tough year in the world of sports. It's been a tough year, period. But it's been particularly tough for those coaches and keeping those kids safe. And so I want to say thank you to Mr. Hall, and I hope that some of you can attend that event. So thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Board Member McCall, especially for bringing up the MESPES, I think the acronym is. And I do have that on my calendar and do intend to go. And Coach Hall teaches at Vanguard High School, and I've gotten a chance to get to know him pretty well through my term so far. And he really is so committed to leadership and so committed to values and so committed to students. He's great to have on our team. So I'm sure it's going to be quite a gala event and a lot of fun. So thank you. All right, Vice Chair King?
I would also, I know it was touched on some last week, but I would also like to say bravo to Chris Lyons and Ellie Truman for an outstanding program that has been put together for our fourth-grade students. And it's my understanding there's work in process for other grade levels, too. So I'm looking forward to that. And thank them also for including the school board on such a wonderful kickoff. And I also want to thank Ms. Gilligan for coming up today to keep reminding us that we need to work on our communication. That's what this is all about, is communication. And I heard a lot of things tonight other than VAM scores. And I know that Dr. Gullett has been scheduling some time with teachers and stuff. And hopefully that can continue because there was a lot said tonight, and they need to be heard. And then we can, you know, when we know, we can work on it and fix things. So that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair King. And I fully agree, you know, communication is everything. And when teachers or any school board employee is ready to talk, we want to be ready to listen in the spirit of just always getting better and accelerating our progress and how committed we are to our students being able to do well when they leave us. So that is the spirit. And I continue to be just intrigued, Board Member McCall, by the swing in the funding forecast in Tallahassee. You know, at the beginning of this school year, it was looking really scary. It had almost a $2 billion shortage. And now we're looking at a surplus. And I know that some of that is going to come from the federal level, but we're in a completely, probably, because session's not over yet and the horse trading continues.
Anything.
Right.
I didn't bring it up because anything-
Right, right, right. But it's looking more encouraging than it was before, and before it was in the basement. So there was really nowhere to go but up. And so I would just like to encourage all of our employees to hang with us because once the dust settles and once all the horse trading is done up there and the budget is completed and Ms. Boston Ellis actually gets the numbers of what we're going to have and we know what our beans really look like, then we can start getting serious about what we can do and what we can't do and what our priorities are going to be. And what I hear from this board every single meeting is the priorities are our kids and by extension, taking good care of our employees because happy employees translate to happy kids, you know? We're all connected. So I'm looking forward to the end of session even more this year, I think, than I have been in the past. And I just want to thank everybody for continuing to hang with us. The end of the school year is starting to come into sight. There's really exciting plans being made and thoughtful plans about graduation. World Equestrian Center is coming to the forefront, is a beautiful venue to have some graduations. And then there's some high schools that want to keep it in their own backyard and continue at the livestock pavilions. So there always is a lot to be thankful for. And as we continue to build our trust with each other and our communication, it's just going to accelerate. And you can quote me on that. All right, Attorney Powers?
Well, it's generally a good day when your lawyer doesn't have a lot to discuss with you. What I do have to say is we've got a large volume of things that we're working on legal with their routine matters. We don't have any particular problems or cause for alarm at this point. And if, and of course, if any of you have anything you need to discuss with me, you can reach out to me individually, and I will do the same. Other than that, wish you guys a good rest of your week. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Attorney Powers, and likewise.
Thanks.
All right, Dr. Gullett?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I do have a few this evening. I did want to start with commending Ms. Gomez again for inspiring us. She inspired me, and I know she's inspired others. And the only addition I would have to what you shared as a board is I think we need to employ her in Marion County Public Schools.
Oh, yeah.
That's implied. And secondly, with the beginning of our evening, that I believe the libraries are the heartbeat of our schools. And so whether it's media center, media specialists, or librarians, our libraries are the heartbeat. And so thanks to them for all the work that they do to make that happen. Amazing work. I have a couple of other updates. Two items that I want to comment on from previous school board meeting. First is regarding an issue that came up from Lake Weir High School. And as you know, community members expressed some concerns about racial comments that were made and actions that occurred at a baseball game over spring break. And to address these concerns, the district launched an investigation that was conducted, that was, sorry, that concluded last Friday. The investigation collected statements from 49 individuals. And that included student athletes and coaches. It included both teams, not only ours in Marion County, but also in Lake County from the other team, game officials, and parents from both sides of the stands during the game. Four of the individuals offered statements that they claimed that they did hear racial slurs from members of the opposing team. One of these four is an adult coach who overheard a comment as the benches cleared at the end of the game. We also found that these individuals claimed to have heard these statements. However, there is no conclusive evidence of the remaining 45 statements confirming this. This investigation showed coaches addressed concerns with officials who took action during the event by removing players from the game based on what they heard, what they witnessed, and what was brought to their attention. And also, the Mid-Florida Officials Association conducted their own investigation. And according to their statements, they found no use of racial slurs outside of what I've already shared with you. So that's one item. The other item, at the same board meeting, we heard concerns regarding Vanguard High School. And Vanguard, there was the search of a female student by a male employee and a male school resource officer. When the incident occurred, an adult female employee was not utilized to conduct the search. Therefore, personal action has been taken and support has been provided to the student. It is now mandatory that student searches be conducted with an adult who is the same gender as the student. This specific language will also be added to the Code of Student Conduct, and we are already including it in administrator training. Those are two items that came up. The other item I wanted to share is regarding what was referenced earlier, the emergency order that came on Friday. We have been anxiously awaiting direction. I'll start with the VAM because that was referenced already. And the VAM was identified from our commissioner and our chancellor. We are going to be provided with the data from the state, inclusive of this year, and it affords the district flexibility and the use of VAM. So we did get clarification on that. It was very helpful. Also of interest to many is the opt-in option for school accountability, which essentially means that at the conclusion of the time, we are expected to get school grades and accountability data measures by the end of July, July 31 of this year. We will be provided the opportunity as a district to opt in by school if we so choose based on that data. If a school opts in, they are then being recognized by their school grade, and they take everything that comes with that. So we can opt in or we can opt out. Important to note that if a school opts in, there has to be 90% of the students tested, and that we can apply. 95% students automatically provides it to be accepted, and we could move forward. But at minimum, 90% of the students do have to be tested for the opportunity for a school to opt in. So that's an opportunity. Everything else, aside from the opting in, freezes. So there'll be no change to any list, any L300 list or any other turnaround list, except where a school opts in, and then they take whatever comes with the current status. The state still will provide data and will publish that on their Know Your Schools website statewide. It just won't have the grade, except for those with that opt-in. So it essentially freezes that. That's, I know that's carefully, we've been watching for that information to come. Just other high-level points of clarification that might be of great interest to you and to the public. The high school graduation, the requirements were extended and waived to recognize qualifications for diploma for the students this year that are seniors. So they're making sure that they have some flexibility in providing this graduation and meeting those requirements. Also, for the scholarships such as Bright Futures, we've been afforded flexibility that's been extended in flexibility in meeting the qualifications specifically related to volunteer hours as such. So there's a lot more flexibility there in meeting those requirements. The third-grade promotions look a little different this year. We appreciate the state's support in this, that if a student does not take the FSA, the ELA, that we can provide some other measures to make sure that they meet that for promotion to fourth grade. And so again, parents will be part of the decision-making at the site, and we'll be looking at alternative data points to do that. Another, last item is VPK. The hours were reduced from 300 to 200, which because of the change in the extension of the testing window, it was really being, it was going to be difficult to meet those 300 hours of class time. So it provides us much more flexibility in meeting the needs of all of our students, which, as you know, we're very passionate about reaching all students this year, from the earliest years all the way through high school. So I'm happy to answer any questions. That's high level of the order. Thank you.
Yeah, Board? No, I just want to clarify because I asked the question yesterday morning on the Coalition Call that since everything freezes, that the external operators will still be required to be at schools?
I asked that question.
Unless we get this-
Unless we opt in, correct?
That's correct. Thank you, Board Member McCall. I actually asked the question during, I was on the webinar, and I actually posed the question. And the chancellor did respond and say, yes, that unless, if we opt in, if there's improvement, we can opt in and get out of that turnaround status if there's improvement. If not, the state requirements stand. And so it essentially, again, freezes it, and we would be required to have an external operator.
So will we be obligated to stay with the same external operator, or do we have-
We are not.
Okay, and, okay.
Sorry.
No, you're perfectly okay.
From a legal standpoint-
That's an annual contract?
It's a two-year contract, right?
Is it an annual or a two-year? How's the contract? Do you know how the contract is currently?
As currently, I would have to review to see whether it's a single or double or two-year. But as of right now, we are, had an option window to do whatever we choose.
And it's, I don't believe it's a two-year contract because that's why we're interviewing external operators tomorrow.
And it's also a good reason why typically, when everything comes through legal, we limit everything to one-year contracts in every realm unless we have to, for some reason, have a renewing option. So it's, there you go.
And if I made that-
We're interviewing tomorrow?
Yes, we got an email.
Okay, okay.
We did?
Yes, we did. It came from Elena.
It did a couple of weeks ago. I think there may have been a little confusion on our end because I think it came through. I thought it was for, I thought it was going to be the team putting it together. I don't know what I was thinking. So I got a little-
Right, we're doing the, it's like we did, it's like we've done before where board members that aren't on the committee observe but don't ask questions. There's an interview committee that does that. And you have to have the same people on the interview committee. If we do two days, it's got to be the same people. You can't be late and miss one presentation and then grade everybody else. So it's pretty strict as far as making sure it's fair.
So you're using the same group?
Format. Well, it's the same format. Yeah, different companies and also some different people on the committee, including a parent from Oak Crest.
And then, I'm trying to remember, was that process that you all select down to two or three top ones? And then the, I thought we, I thought-
No, they're ranked, and then we decide as a board.
Right, they were ranked.
Yeah, and that's a recommend-
Three, the top three, and then we voted, the board voted.
Right. Yeah, in the end, the board gets to pick it.
So I think there was, I think there was, I don't think we understood. We, well, I think we were here and we did, so we were here for part of the interview process, and we knew how to say yes or no, or-
That's right, and the interview, okay, you're right.
And it was over on here.
You're right.
So that's right. I don't think I understood through that email somehow. I think I missed that, what was happening this day until-
I missed it. I totally missed it. I can't be here tomorrow.
I can't either.
Okay, I don't, it's too bad that, well, communication, because it's really the same format.
Because I read it as that committee-
Yeah, I thought too.
Right.
Oh, I see.
Invite where we were invited to attend?
Yeah, if it's not on my calendar as a calendar invite, it does not happen.
Okay, so it sounds like what got missed was the clarity of, that the board is, was invited to come as observers and listen and hear all the conversation. Is this, and I can't remember this, is it, will it be televised?
No.
No, okay, okay. Or recorded in some way?
I apologize. Not on mine either.
Okay, there'll be someone taking minutes, so at least then that way, if you can't attend, you'll be able to get some idea of who's who.
You can get the DCR, then you can get the-
So any, anytime there's something that we need to be invited to, we have to have a calendar invite so that we can either opt in or opt out of it. Because just to get it in, the email, I missed the email. I didn't even see the email until yesterday, and then I looked at it.
Calendar invites would have come from the Transformation Department from Ms. Kiner, since she's the lead on that. So that would have been from the Department, but invites would not have come from me directly.
Right, so that's just if, if they're inviting us to anything, the best thing to do is send us a calendar invite.
It goes to show you how much we've come to rely on- It goes to show you how much we've come to rely on calendar invites. I fought it for a long time and kept my paper calendar, but now it's.
On a daily basis. It is so easy to miss these emails because we get so many.
I'll make sure to remind the team. Absolutely. Thank you.
The other game, Ms. McCall, we did what?
So many emails.
This board gets a lot of.
It is so easy to miss things.
We say we want to hear from people and we do.
And we do.
I feel guilty just with the number of emails that I send you. The other millions that you get every day have got to be terrible, so I'm sorry.
But it's hard, it's hard to keep up. You know, you can go through and answer 20 and if you look at it again in an hour, you've got another 40 or 50.
Indeed, yeah.
So it's just, it's hard to keep up.
And we want to keep up and we don't want to miss important things, so.
Correct. And we missed that, that's a very important thing that, that four of us missed.
Yeah.
And we won't be here.
I'll be happy to make copies and I'll go ahead and forward you the whole meeting. You'll be able to hear it from the beginning to end.
Eight o'clock.
Eight, five is what it's tomorrow.
Yeah, it's through the day.
There's no way.
I'll be here in and out throughout the day.
I'll, I'll pop in.
Okay. All right. And then it sounds like we've got a mechanism to communicate out because that is very important, you guys. Some of them you know, but you might not know any of them. Board Member Kamala, it's your first, you know, first rodeo.
How many are interviewed?
Four.
Four.
And they have how many, I mean, how many, how much time to present?
I wasn't.
It's 30, 30 minutes and then 30 minutes, so each one is an hour.
Yeah.
And then time for scoring and all that. Remember, it was a long process.
I wish it was on my.
Dr. Gullett.
Madam Chair, thank you, if I may. As a reminder, May 6th is when we have the recommendations coming forward for the work session.
Yep.
So however you would like and what the pleasure of the board is to bring those recommendations forward to discussion, but it's on the agenda for the May 6th.
Okay. All right. Did you have anything else, Dr. Gullett?
Thank you.
Okay, and while we were within all of that, I was remembering there was one thing and it made me think about it because of summer coming on. I did get some outreach from an employee speaking about volunteering and she said, well, that our fitness classes that so many people have availed themselves of in the past employees are completely voluntary and that the participants sign a release of liability and maybe with some additional language for COVID. It's not, it's after-school hours, it doesn't involve kids, it's just adult exercise. And it's only $10 a semester. And they have everything that they teach from yoga to weightlifting, I guess, Zumba. So if there's a way to reincorporate that safely, it sounds like there's plenty of interest there and, and the sooner the better.
Sir, may I briefly address another issue? What we were just talking about and the number of emails you received and everything, it brings up an issue that I've been dealing with fairly recently. And that is that there's some legislation, and we'll get into the details of, there's some legislation that is proposed each year, it's been proposed again this year, and it regards school boards and how they should be composed and what the members should be required to do and what the benefits are and should not be. And I just want to point out this little factor for everyone to consider. Each of us does our job and puts a lot of time, effort, heart and soul into it. These board members don't talk about themselves and what they do here on this opportunity on this stage. But I want to let you know that in order to be an effective board member, and I've seen this being the attorney now here, they respond to a great number of staff emails. They respond to a great number of public emails. They respond to calls on their cell phone at any time from members of the public. They respond to calls from me on a regular basis, who needs to get in contact with them regarding a number of issues. In addition to those factors, they also appear for work session meetings, which are frequently quite long and extended. They appear for agenda review. They appear for school board meetings, which are here in the evenings when they could be with their families as well. They are, in order to be an effective school board member, there is a lot of investment of time, heart, soul and personal input. And I just wanted to state that, that, that whenever there is legislation that comes along that, that is in any way indicating that they, that someone else should control what we have a school board do or say, or what a school board, how a school board should be compensated, or whether they should be compensated, or anything else, these are people that put a lot of their efforts into this, regardless of what their political affiliation may be and regardless of what their position in the community may would be. We have a number of people from a number of walks of life here who put a lot of effort into making sure that our school district and our students are served well. So I ask for you to consider that when these issues come up and you may be asked in the future to address any sort of ballot measure or you may be simply asked to give your opinion. Consider that for a moment because I'm not sure that everyone sees the amount of time and effort that is put into doing this job effectively and well. And I thank all of you for your service and your time. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gullett.
Thank you, Attorney Powers, for that.
There is, I, I can tell you that there is an amendment to the bill that I believe will be heard Thursday to remove the salary issue and replaces it with term limits. So I don't know where that is. I'll try to find out more.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you, Attorney Powers. It's, it's always nice to get some gratitude and it's even nicer to give it. So, thank you. Thank you for that. Okay. Anything else for the good of the team before we go into addressing expulsion matters? All right. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through March 24th, 2021. Ms. Martinez Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD21-046E, JD21-047, JD21-048, JD21-049 with educational services through the remainder of the 2020, 21, 2021 school year and the entire 2021, 2022 school year? Have a motion.
Okay.
Moved by Vice Chair King.
Okay.
Seconded by Board Member McCall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, move.
Moved by Vice Chair King, seconded by Board Member Cummings.
Do you all turn to placement?
All those in favor say aye. Ma'am?
Did we, did we vote on the alternative placements? I'm sorry, I know we just did.
Yes, we did.
Okay, good. I'm like, I know we just did expulsions, I didn't know that we did alternative placements.
That would, Ms. Martinez Lopez, you cut that, okay, yes.
Okay, sorry.
All right.